I'd like to call on me, daughter, please rise. We can have a moment of silence, keep those folks in Orlando in our prayers, hope that never ever happens again anywhere, and let's pray for our troops to come home safe. Thank you. That is the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Here.
Freeholder Bellante?
Here.
Freeholder Kenny?
Here.
Freeholder Polos?
Here.
Freeholder Tamara?
Here.
Freeholder Valenti?
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Here.
We have recognition? Yes, recognizing Andrew Neach on his achievements in collegiate baseball.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, Freeholder Kenny will give the presentation. Very much.
I'm going to bring forward a young man who has something in common with Pete Rose and Ichiro Suzuki, if I said his name correct. No, he's not gambled on baseball games. And no, he's not earned a quarter of his hits in a different league. He earned all these hits in the same league, with the same team, and I want to bring Andrew Neach up right now so we can recognize him for being the all-time Division III hits leader at New Jersey City University. Come on. Now, what I want to do is I want to read the proclamation in a second here. I just want to tell you, one of your biggest fans is your Aunt Helen. Anybody who's friends with her on Facebook got all the updates on every hit that you were getting, every record that you were setting, because he has not only set the all-time hits-leading record, he has a bunch of other records here. So, I'm going to read the proclamation from the Board of Chosen Freeholders. Whereas it has come to the attention of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders that Andrew Neach is worthy of special recognition, and I'm saying this correct, right? Okay, I just want to make sure. Whereas Andrew Neach has been the National Collegiate Baseball Writers Association, Division III Honorable Mention, National Hitter of the Week, New Jersey Athletic Conference Player of the Week, NCAA Division III Mid-Atlantic A B C A, Rolling's All Regional, three-time New Jersey Collegiate Baseball Association and All-State Selection, Eastern College Athletic Conference Division III Metro Region Player of the Week, New Jersey Athletic Conference Player of the Week, 2013 NJCBA Division Two and Three All Rookie Team, a four-time NJ New Jersey City University Athlete of the Week, New Jersey City University All-Time Hits King at 205 hits, All-Time Leader in Doubles at 50, Leader in Extra Base Hits with 63, Leader in Total Bases with 292, and Leader in Games Played with 150, Leader in Games Started at 149. What happened? You wanted a day off? Ah, I heard. Okay, we'll take that. Whereas Andrew resides in Avonel and is a graduate from New Jersey City University, whereas Andrew Neach plans to make a professional career out of baseball, he became one of the few players in Division III history with 200 hits, 100 RBIs, 100 runs, and 50 doubles in 150 or fewer games. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board and Chosen Freeholders of the County of Middlesex that we hereby congratulate Andrew for his accomplishments and achievements. And it's signed by all the freeholders here, and I want to congratulate you, sir. Now, we know where you got it all from. Your father, who was involved in the leagues that you played in right when you were in the township, which was Fords and Colonia. So, two leagues, I know both your parents were very active, because I remember them from when I was on the council. We'd go to Little League parades, they're always there, always involved. So, you know, it's not just you, but you know, it takes a village, you've got to build off of something, and you've built off your parents, and so I guess you want to thank your parents for some of the records that you set, correct? All right, that's a hint. Not yet, I'm going to give you a second to say something. But also in the spare time, Andrew's very involved in the first aid in Woodbridge Township. I know you just told me that you're involved with three of the squads, and fire department? I'm trying to think, was it one of the fire departments you're involved in, or you were going to, thinking about getting involved?
Waiting.
Waiting to get involved. So, on top of school, homework, finals, baseball, practice, you've also been very active in the community. I want to congratulate you, thank you for what you've done. You set a great example for others to follow. What I want to do is turn the microphone over to you if you'd like to say something? Thank anybody?
I didn't really have anything, so I'm just going to make this quick. Thank all of you freeholders that are sitting here, my family, my extended family, my girlfriend and her sister, and her father that came out. It's an honor to represent the county, my town, and the university, so, like I said, I'm going to make it quick, so, enjoy the rest of your night, and thank you.
We could use some hitters.
If you have any connections, please.
References are low, right?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, correspondence.
Each freeholder's been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval?
The Board of Chosen Freeholders' regular meeting, June 2nd, 2016, at 7 o'clock PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
We have ordinances, the clerk will read ordinance number 16-003 by Ty Homely.
An ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, of the payment of principal and interest on the county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds issued by the Middlesex County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,150,000, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, July 21st, 2016, at 7 o'clock PM, authorizing publication thereof, consenting to such financing and determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-003 on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Next is the clerk will read ordinance number 430 by Ty Homely.
A loan ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a loan and security agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the undertaking of various 2016 capital improvements and the acquisition and installation as applicable of various equipment with an estimated cost of $5,725,000, the cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2016 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, July 21st, 2016, at 7 o'clock PM, and authorizing publication thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 430 on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, Freeholder reports, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Office of Workforce Development, the Elite Youth Program High School Equivalency Graduation. Forty-one students from the Office of Workforce Development's Elite Youth Program obtained their high school equivalency diplomas during the program year, which commenced on July 1st, 2015. The Elite Program focuses on entry-level internships, training, and employment for youth in the Perth Amboy One-Stop Career Center. This past Tuesday, 12 of those students participated in a graduation and recognition ceremony at Middlesex County College. The students were joined by their family and friends as they celebrated this great achievement. Keynote speaker Winston C. Trumpet provided a great motivational speech that challenged students to prepare for the future by setting goals and chasing their dreams. On an annual basis, the Elite Youth Program serves 150 out-of-school youth between the ages of 16 and 24. Services include vocational training, work experience, mentoring, job placement, and high school equivalency preparation. Middlesex County Workforce Development is mobile, so you can text WORKFORCE to 56512. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Deputy Director Carol Bellante.
Thank you, Director. As we move toward the November election, the registration deadline for the presidential general election is October 18th, 2016. Residents may come to the office of the Board of Elections until 9:00 PM on that day to submit registration forms. To check your registration information, please go to New Jersey State Division of Elections website and click on the icon "I am registered" and follow the prompts to verify your information. You may also contact the Board of Elections at 732-745-3471, or by email at elections@countycl.middlessex.njersi.us. And additionally, you can visit your local municipal clerk's office for information and forms. As Freeholder lay is on to the Middlesex County Open Space and Recreation Public Advisory Committee, I am happy to continue to bring you up-to-date on open space items. The Middlesex County Improvement Authority continues due diligence work on the acquisition of 26 acres along Gravel Hill Spotswood Road in Monroe Township. The Improvement Authority has issued a notice to proceed for Phase 1 environmental work on this property. Appraisals are currently under review, and we expect contract negotiations this summer. With favorable results from the environmental work, we hope to have a contract for freeholder consideration early this fall. And that's my report, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. I really don't have a report tonight, I just want to correct something, or just add on to something I mentioned at the last meeting. I spoke about the World Hunger Day and the Dime Below the Line event that was put on, and I was remiss in not mentioning Jennifer Apostle from McFoods, who was there and helped with the program together, and I just want to mention her and, you know, the fantastic job that she does at McFoods. So, that's all, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder Ace James Polos?
Two quick items, Director. I attended the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award Ceremony this morning. There were nearly 800 participants there, police officers and state troopers from around the state. It was a very impressive showing. They presented awards to people who have, officers who have arrested drunk drivers and impaired drivers on the streets. In fact, one gentleman, I thought it was pretty amazing, from North Jersey, one officer, made 98 drunk driving arrests last year on his own, in 2015. So, that's just an amazing statistic. But anyway, a great event, and certainly a great credit shown to the officers who deserve it to protect our streets. Secondly, on June 27th, we're going to finally be dedicating our inflatable boat task force, and I know the freeholders will be getting more information about, I think that's the date that we picked, we selected, Director, so we're happy about that, we'll be implementing that program. And lastly, I beg your indulgence, Director, as I told you earlier, my eldest daughter, Nicolette, who's graduating this year, is receiving a scholarship tonight at the Stony Brook in Branchburg, so I will be stepping out a little bit early. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Freeholder Charlie Tamara?
Thank you, sir. You know, on June 4th, on Saturday, June 4th, we celebrated National Trails Day, and we had over 30 volunteers, plus our Conservation Corps at the Jamesburg Park Conservation Area, which borders Helmet and East Brunswick, which we, that's a county purchased in the early 70s, and it's a huge piece of property, over 1,400 acres. We had 30 volunteers from all over the state of New Jersey, even one from Brooklyn, so it was nice to see the volunteers come out and give us a hand, removing litter. They removed over 100 pounds of litter, a TV, and no, it was not my TV from a Giants game that they lost. They removed Japanese knotweed, an invasive plant that would help the native plants and the wildlife thrive and grow, and they cleared a bunch of trees out of, away from trails and debris. Last night was opening night at Disney's Little Mermaid, plays in the park at the Stephen Cathedral Theater. We had over 600 who attended. That show runs through June 25th with no show on Sunday, June 19th. And of course, and again this year, we're having a special family show, starting at 7:30 on Monday, June 20th, and on Tuesday, June 21st. You know, come out, bring your young children, because it's a great show for them to see and enjoy. And our next show after this one is Sister Act, and it starts on July 6th. And again this year, to all our active servicemen and women, we're offering them and their immediate families free admission. You have to call Jackie Neal at 732-745-3936. And, you know, we want to do a tribute to our veterans this year, so South Pacific, we are reserving special seats for August 1st for veterans of WWII and the Korean War, August 2nd for veterans of the Vietnam War, and August 3rd for veterans of all other wars and conflicts. And I know of one gentleman who is going on August 1st, he's a WWII veteran, he's a gentleman from Edison, his name is George Red Ellis. Matter of fact, he was one of the first streets we dedicated in honor of him in Edison, Michael Road. He fought in the Battle of the Bulge, was captured by the Germans, he escaped, captured by the Germans again, escaped the second time. So, this guy wasn't to be helped by anybody, and it's, last year, at one of the Devils' games, him and his 20,000 closest friends were there cheering him, because he introduced him and spoke about what he did during the war. So, please contact our Parks Office for more information, and I know that the VA Hospital will also be there for August 3rd showing, they're bringing veterans from the VA Hospital in Menlo Park there. August, I'm sorry, July 16th, 2016, is our Pancreatic Cancer Coed Softball Tournament that our director gets very involved in, and we had a great walk last Saturday, raised a lot of money, did a great job, the county did a great job, our health department did a wonderful job there, we had one of the best turnouts yet for that night, for that day, I mean. Teams are still needed, so come out and support the wonderful cause. You've got to contact Tracy Reed at the Office of Parks and Recreation, she's at 732-745-4484. And I heard that Ronnie's going to throw out the first pitch, you just can't throw it the way 50 Cent did it that one game. He just threw it way out.
It was a strike.
Yeah, exactly.
That's your report?
That's my report, sorry.
Freeholder Blanquita Valenti?
Thank you, Freeholder Director. The Office of Human Services was recently notified about its housing and urban development continuum of care funding. This is a nationally competitive process to award money specifically to address homelessness. There are 16 recognized continuums in New Jersey, and Middlesex County's application received the highest score in the state. The highest score in the application allows us to continue to support existing projects, and it provides additional funding of approximately $300,000 for rapid rehousing for homeless households. Congratulations and thank you to our county staff and all the partner agencies within the Middlesex County Housing Continuum of Care for their hard work and dedication. I also want to highlight the Mental Health Awareness Month event I attended recently at East Jersey Old Town Village. Sponsored by the Middlesex County Mental Health Board, the event focused on the power of peer support and featured a panel presentation, artwork, poetry, and music. The event drew a large crowd, and I am confident that the people who attended learned a great deal about available peer support services and were inspired by the message of hope that was shared. Thank you to everyone who planned and participated in the event, especially those people who share their personal experiences, and that's my report, Freeholder Director.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I probably concluded all my tours of high schools and middle schools in the county, speaking to the students there on what a freeholder does, on the political process, and our responsibilities, responsibilities of how we conduct business, as far as the difference between us, state government, and federal government elected officials, and it was very interesting for me as well as them, and I truly enjoyed that. I started now doing a tour of the county to the different senior centers with our staff from the Community Services Department, and we're offering meetings with them to demonstrate to the seniors on what services our Community Services Department committees provide, and that's been well received for the few that we already started doing, and we have plenty more to do. I want to thank the Health Department, Les Jones, and all his staff. I want to thank Rick Clear and the Parks Department and all their staff for all the hard work and true effort that they put into the Pancreatic Cancer Walk this past Saturday. It was a beautiful turnout, Joe Krizer as well, heavily involved in the Pancreatic Cancer Walk organization. But it was a great, great day for raising money, raising awareness for pancreatic cancer research. I can't thank all of you enough, and everyone involved, and the donors as well. We had over 300 participants, between walkers and runners, and I'm told that we're estimated to reach over $30,000 in donations, which is a credit to all the hard work that all these individuals do, and hopefully one day, we will find the cure for pancreatic cancer. Okay. Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time I'd like to open the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of a community newspaper, New Brunswick Today, right here. I'd like to ask about a few resolutions, the first being 968 at the top of page six. It's for asbestos abatement at Building 216. Can you tell me what, where is Building 216? What is that building?
Yes, that's a warehouse that's on the Middlesex County College campus. We use it strictly for storage of some equipment and materials. We are in the process of renovating that building, and as we're in the process of doing that, we uncovered some asbestos around some of the piping, it's minimal, but we want to go through a process of removing it, and that's what the cost of that resolution is for.
Okay, so it's six figures?
Yes.
But you still consider that minimal?
Minimalizes the amount of asbestos in the building, that's the cost.
Okay. I'll move over to the top of page 11, near the top of page 11 is 1010, is a commitment to appropriate $840,000 for 12 units of affordable rental housing for homeless individuals and families in New Brunswick. Can you please, can somebody speak a little bit to this project or this application?
I'm looking at projects that's being created to house the mix of homeless families and hardship families, and that may mean that they have limited income, have had hardship, or have been addicted, but people who are in need of help are getting it to housing.
Okay.
What specifically do you want to know about that?
It sounds great. Whose idea was it? Is this an application-based thing, where they applied for this in the county?
The concept for the development collaboration, for continuing care with our housing division of coming home, so there's a lot of discussion and consideration that's being, in terms of what's needed, as well as what resources are available, that work toward coming up with development recommendations based on these needs.
Okay, thank you very much. I heard the plans at my local zoning board, and I find it pretty interesting, so thank you for indulging me. The next one is on the very next page, page 12. 1019 is an inmate telephone service for, I guess, the county jail. Can the warden, could you ask the warden to speak to this? I'd like to know, he mentioned to me that there might be some changes in the system, some major changes, did those happen, are those going to happen? What's the deal with the new contract?
Sure. Well, this particular resolution speaks directly to the changes in the FCC rules for the charging of inmate phone calls when the map is in charge, so it just brings us in compliance with the FCC regulations and the materials they come with.
Okay, and can I hear an update on those plans for, I believe, it was going to be inmate email service and other improvements to the system? It is a pretty dilapidated system.
I think you could do that in the next court, you just said it's a resolution, the resolution is just about bringing us in compliance with the FCC regulations.
Okay, I mean, could you ask the warden to just answer my question?
When it comes to the next five minutes, you got, you can answer it. You're talking about the resolutions that are listed, as he just explained to you.
Okay. I don't understand why, why it has to wait. I'll be back.
Anyone else in the public that would like to speak on any resolutions?
Remove the closed public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso?
I believe there are no resolutions to be removed.
No one needs to vote on taking resolutions separately? No?
Then Freeholder Director, a motion would be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 16-948 through Resolution 16-1046.
Is there a motion? Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Polos? Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any items they would like to speak on, state your name for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again. Like I said, I'm Charles Cradaville, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, it's the only bilingual newspaper in New Jersey, and we're very proud of it, we have a new issue out today, it is available here for people who want them. I encourage you to read them, there's some stories in here that really are worthy of the freeholders' comments, and worthy of the freeholders responding. So, the first one I have to ask about, so Mr. Kelso is the chief legal advisor to the Middlesex County Prosecutor, is that correct?
The Office of County Council is the chief legal advisor to the prosecutor's office for administrative purposes.
And so, for administrative purposes, have, has the county council's office informed the prosecutor that the county council does not, does not have the opinion that the prosecutor's financial disclosure form is properly compliant with the local government ethics law? And that's an opinion you stated at this meeting?
I said the response, let me answer your question. The responsibility to The responsibility to file the financial disclosures is a personal responsibility to individuals. It is not to the county council's office to advise someone as to how to fill out the form and what information is necessary, they do that on their own. And the position that I answered your question previously still stands.
Okay, so you do believe that it's not fully compliant with the law to?
No, I didn't say that.
To list a genre of business?
Don't put words in.
Well, I'm saying, I asked a simple question about law firm, if you say law firm and you don't give an address for the law firm, you don't give a name for the law firm, is that fully compliant? Or do you have to name the business?
I told you, the last meeting, that I believed it was that if I was answering that question, that I would have put the name of the law firm in. If the prosecutor filled it out in a different fashion, that's his position to take, but it's not my responsibility to advise him or anyone else as to how to fill out the form.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. I think somebody should communicate to him that he is in violation, because, and I did speak with him today, and asked him for his response, and his response was no comment as to whether he believes he's in compliance with the law. So, the prosecutor does not have a comment or a response as to whether or not he's in compliance with this law, and somebody ought to tell him, he should amend the form and not omit things from it in the future.
Mr. Cradaville, you made a question to the prosecutor himself, and you weren't satisfied with the answer he gave you? Yes or no?
I don't think anybody would be satisfied with that answer.
Are you satisfied with that answer?
No, no, I'm not, it does not inspire.
So then my suggestion to you, if you're not satisfied with his answer, being a constitutional officer that he is, then I would suggest that you go see the state attorney general.
Okay, it's like a revolving door there, though, I'll find whoever happens to be the attorney general that day.
We are not the police of the prosecutor, we are not the guard of the prosecutor.
I understand, but gosh, wouldn't it be nice if they could come to these meetings once in a while and defend themselves, speak up for themselves? It is ridiculous that we go by another meeting without the prosecutor or the sheriff here, and the person overseeing that for the board is also not here for the public comment for the second meeting now. So, I think if the prosecutor's doing nothing wrong, he should be able to say so and speak for himself, and he should be able to come to these meetings. I don't understand, this doesn't compute, this is not...
It's not his responsibility or the sheriff to attend any of these meetings. Now, I see that you have a cell phone, and I think quite a bit of America has cell phones, I think you can reach him by cellphone or from your phone to his office, whether it be Freeholder Polos, who happened to go to a family event that was high priority to him, which I would respect.
And I respect that, too.
And I respect that he left for.
Yes.
So I would recommend that, you know, maybe you try them on the cell, on the phone.
You know, I've done, I've really, really honestly tried to reach out, and I get the cold shoulder, so I would just like to ask before I leave the podium, can I get an answer to my question about the phone system in the prison and when we can, what the timeline is for improving it?
Absolutely. So, we became compliant with the FCC rulings and the potential legislation in the state of New Jersey, and past that, we're, the county as a whole is looking at their options for improvements in the image, telephones, and technology, and KIOS, and products that are current. So, I don't have a timeline for you, a specific date as to when those are gonna be implemented, but I can tell you that the county is actually looking into all the latest technology and what's available, and what's the best way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, freeholders.
Anyone else in the public?
I'll move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second. Motion adjourned by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.